We'll have our call to order and pleasure of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. As far as our roll call for this evening, everyone is present with the exception of Mr. Leach. He's traveling. He plans to join us a bit later. Hopefully we'll see him there. We had an executive session just prior to this meeting, so we do apologize we're a little bit late with regard to personnel. And next we have our opening public comment. And for those of us who are new tonight, I've lost, not me, but for those of you who are new tonight, the public comment for the first section is limited to agenda items. And at the end of the meeting is when we have public comment and you can pretty much speak on whichever you may wish to speak to. So do we have anybody in the room for public comment with agenda based items? No? Anyone online? Okay, thank you. Dr. Finney, would you like to take it over with item four?
Item four brings a big smile to my face. This evening, we have Mr. Seiler and our some individuals from West Potts Grove Elementary School. At this point, I'd like to ask Mr. Seiler to step to the microphone and introduce his team.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity this evening to highlight a significant port of point of pride for us at West Potts Grove Elementary School, and that's our PBIS initiative. I have a number of guests who are going to speak to the program better than I could this evening, and that'll be started off with our building coaches. We have two staff members at West who lead our team in all areas PBIS, Mrs. Snyder, our school counselor, and Mrs. Culp, one of our learning support teachers. And then we have some student speakers who'll be telling you a little bit more. We have Parker Grace, Cole, Ben, Austin, Tyrone, and Michaela, who'll be telling you what PBIS looks like at West Potts Grove Elementary School. So it's my honor to hand this over to Mrs. Snyder.
Good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to be here. I'm going to talk a little bit about PBIS, but I know we're all really waiting to hear from the children, so it won't be too long. PBIS is a three-tiered evidence-based framework which supports students' social, emotional, and behavioral growth. We have been implementing it at West for quite some time, and we recently received our state recognition for tier one, which means that we are fulfilling the components across the board for all students. So we're really thrilled about that. PBIS also connects to the district's goal under MTSS. Thank you for your time. I'm going to introduce Parker Grace next. You're in for a treat.
Good eve- Good evening, Potts Grove. Good evening, Potts Grove School Board. My name is Parker Grace, and I am going to talk to you today about the Falcon Four at West Potts Grove. The Falcon Four are the school rules, and they are be safe, be positive, be respectful, and be responsible. Mr. Seiler says it to us every day on the morning announcements. We have posters in our classroom and in the hallways. We say it a lot. Next, Cole is going to tell you about the Falcon Four around the school.
Good evening, my- good evenings, Potts Grove School Board. My name is Cole, and I'm going to tell you more about the Falcon Four. We practice lessons on what the Falcon Four looks like in different areas around the school, like the hallways, cafeteria, bathroom, and recess. Mr. Seiler talks to us about the morning announcements about following on a- focusing on a different part of the Falcon Four. Every day being safe at recess means we keep our hands and feet to ourselves. Being respectful in the classroom means we keep our personal area organized and neat. Next, Ben is going to tell you about school incentives.
Good evening, Potts Grove School Board. My name is Ben, and I'm going to tell you more about our school incentives. At West, we can earn golden tickets or paw prints for following the Falcon Four. I earned a golden ticket for cleaning water spill and stacking chairs in the classroom. When I did that, I was being responsible. I earned a paw print in the cafeteria for sitting quietly. When I did that, I was being respectful. Next, Austin is going to tell you about our school mascot, Westy.
Good evening, Potts Grove School Board. My name is Austin, and I'm going to tell you about our school mascot, Westy. Westy is my favorite mascot. He can't talk, but he reminds us of the Falcon Four. Westy stands for West encourages students to include everyone. We see Westy at assemblies, special days, and sometimes he visits our classrooms. Next, Tyrone is going to tell you more about our assemblies.
Good evening, Potts Grove School Board. My name is Tyrone, and I'm going to tell you about our school assemblies. We have an assembly every month where we talk about the Falcon Four and the character trait of that month. Our affinity spoke to us about respect at our first assembly. We sing our school song and reread the book of the month. Next, Michaela will tell you more about the book of the month.
Good evening, Potts Grove School Board. My name is Michaela, and I will be going to tell you about our book of the month during our assembly. We all read a book about the character trait for the month. At our first assembly, we read, "Have you filled a bucket today?" Filling bu- bucket filling means if you fill a- if you help someone, you both feel happy. We have the book of the month in our classroom. After the assembly, everyone in our class gets a chance to bring the book home and read it with their family. Then they will bring it back the next day for another student to read at home. Thank you for listening to our presentation this evening.
One, two, one, two. One, two.
Item five, the student representative report. Emily, you're first up, right?
Start off great so far, and now that everyone is into a routine with classes and schedules, extracurricular activities are really starting to take off. Fall sports are in full swing, and all teens have had great performances to kick off this season. Marching band had their first competition this past Saturday and brought home first in their division along with some other top honors. Last but not least, after-school clubs have started up with some old clubs returning along with some new additions this year, such as Mr. Kratz's Strategy Gaming Club. Now I'll turn it over to Lily to continue to find out what has been happening inside our school. In addition, oh, is this not on either? Hello, is this on? Okay. In addition to everything Emily has talked about, recently there has been a big concern about dress code. The student body, myself included, feels as if the staff at Potts Grove has become too strict with dress code restrictions, which are supposed to help stop the learning distractions that may happen at school. As a result, students have actually been more disruptive by getting sent to the office or being told to find something else to cover up what they were originally wearing. Students feel as if this defeats the original purpose of our school's dress code and would like to see some change. The majority of everyone I've spoken to about this understands the reason for the implementation of the dress code, but does not understand why recently this has become such a large issue. Some students have already met with our school's principal, Dr. Smith, and have learned there may have been some misunderstandings with what their dress code originally states and what students are getting dress coded for. We hope to see some change with what students are getting dress coded for in the future. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to reach out to Emily or me about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily and Lily. At this point, Dr. Smith, would you be so kind to join us at the microphone? I'd like you, this one right here, I think, to maybe speak to dress code and the attendance, some of the things that you've been doing at the high school.
Good evening. Are we good? Yeah, all right, good. Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity. Thank you, ladies. So we have been given dress code a little bit more attention at the high school. But not only that, another area we've really been focused on is our students getting to school on time, getting the classes on time. But we did tighten things up a little bit. We're really trying to shift the culture just a bit. You know, dress code is sort of one of those minimum expectations, and I will agree with the ladies that there was some confusion initially. We had about 100 adults, you know, in the building, about 1,000 students. And, you know, we had to talk to some of our staff members about dignity and respect and about how we're going to approach people when this might be an issue. So I think it was a learning opportunity for everyone. You know, there were some enforcement concerns, and I spoke to a number of student leaders. I spoke to a number of parents. And I think we got it, I think we got it taken care of. I think we got it addressed. I remember specifically last Thursday at 11:44, I had some young ladies in my office, and I said, "Well, if any of this happens again," because there were some questions about yoga pants and baggy sweatshirts, and that wasn't the intent of our dress code. It's not included in our dress code, and you can't have an opinion about dress code. The dress code is in the student handbook, and we expect it to be followed by the adults enforcing it and by the students when they walk into the building. So I promised the students that we would clean it up, and since then I have not heard anything in regard to those situations. So I think we have a better understanding of what our expectations are. And the reality is, on a daily basis, we probably had about 98, 99% of our students completely 100% compliant. As you heard, we had a great start to the school year. I've heard from a number of the teachers. I've heard from some of the students. Like, it feels normal. And however we define normal now after all the COVID years, and that's a dirty word. I apologize. So, you know, the reality is I think it was a learning experience for all of us. I know I got to have some fabulous conversations with some of the young adults in our building. And I think we really came to an understanding that we have some rules in place. We may not agree with them, but we're going to be as compliant as we possibly can. And one thing that I spoke about is that, you know, please don't think that this is a Dr. Smith rule, or this is a Mr. Stein rule, or a Mr. Visa rule, or insert any staff member. It's just, you know, one of those expectations. And so I think through all this, we've learned a little bit. I think we've grown, and I think we continue to move forward. I encourage the students to come and speak to me or speak to an adult whenever they may have an issue or concern like this, because it has to be about dignity and respect always. And what I've been trying to talk to people about this year, both the adults and the students, is that we don't need to be perfect, but we need to get a little better each day. So what are we doing to make the high school a little better each day? And I think this is a perfect example of where we had some disagreement, but we came together, and we're going to be able to move forward, and we're going to make the school better. You know, we talk about a little bit about late to school. Pretty much everyone here knows I started April 1st-ish last year. It was April 1st. And when I got here, there were somewhere between 70 and 100 students late to school every day, and there were not really any consequences in place. So if we do some quick math and we say it's 10 minutes a day, that's 50 minutes a week. So you miss like a class period a week. And over a month, that's four class periods, and over a school year, that's 36 class periods. So we just missed two units in math and two units in English. So we decided we were going to tighten that up a little bit, and let me tell you, it's been fabulous. The kids have responded. We cleaned up the front of the building a little bit with the parent drop-off. We don't have the biggest loop for parents to drop off and drive through. First few days, there was some traffic. You know, the last couple of days, it's been awesome. You look outside at 7:27, 7:28, there's no traffic. Parents have left a few minutes early. Our student drivers are doing a phenomenal job. So I think this was a great opportunity for some of our student leaders to actually represent the students when we talk about dress code. And I think that they found that we were able to work together, and I appreciated all the feedback that I was able to get. And, you know, it's just been, it's been a fabulous opening. The kids have done a fab- well, young adults, they're not kids. The young adults have done a fabulous job in our building, and they've responded very well. So I'm very proud of them. So thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, ladies. And, you know, like I've said, if we have issues, we talk about it. We figure out what we can do to move forward, and we do everything we can to make it a little better each day. So, thank you.
Any questions for either our students or Dr. Smith?
For both of you guys, do you feel that the dress code issues have been properly addressed?
Yeah, in the beginning, it was just, I mean, since I'm a senior, and I didn't really have that many dress code restrictions for the past three years, I think it was more of a lot of getting used to, and I understand the implementations that had to be put in place, but it was a lot for the seniors and the older kids who had been used to little to no restrictions. So, and I think once we had some students talk to him, it was worked out, but originally people were freaked out about everything.
Yeah, I agree with that. I mean, I think now is so much better because everyone's kind of all on the same page, and it's less like resentment against it. Because I think at first it was like a big shock, and nobody wanted to comply just because they didn't like it. But I think now everyone knows where it's coming from, and that everything's been worked out.
And just a little feedback, today is the first day of this school year where my daughter has not come home screaming about the dress code. So thank you. No, I think that you must be on the right track, because that's the first thing out of her mouth every day.
That's great. And I think, again, I think it shows that if we can have our student leaders actually be student leaders, how it's so easy to move forward. Because a hurdle like this and most other high schools would linger for months and months and months. And this was, you know, we had a little bit of an issue. We addressed it. We talked about it. We continue to talk about it. We asked for feedback. And I think, I think we're moving forward, and that's awesome, because then we can focus on things like homecoming and, you know, we're having tailgate and all the stuff that we can do to make high school exciting. Like, there's the 7:30 to 2:17, but what makes high school exciting is what happens after 2:17. So I think it's been pretty phenomenal.
I do have to say hats off to you girls, because I know every top being sold to teens now, teen girls, is a midriff top. You just can't find something that's not super short right now. So, good luck. I know it's difficult. My daughter went through the same thing with her transition into college to real life. So we're still transitioning. I've lost a lot of my wardrobe.
Moving on to 6.1, report of the superintendent.
Good evening. Just one item to talk about. Tomorrow, September 14th, we have our scheduled early dismissal. Please note that we have changed our dismissal time for early dismissal this year. In the past, we have had two different early dismissals at each school. This year, we have standardized our early dismissal. We did this to ensure that students receive lunch each school day and to make it a consistent dismissal time for families. The high school will dismiss at 11:15. Middle school will dismiss at 11:45, and the elementary schools will dismiss at 12:45. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Moving on to number seven, approval of the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion. Do we approve 7.1 and 7.2?
The motion and a second. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none. All in favor? All opposed. Motion passes. Moving on to number eight, receiving of accounts for audit.
I move that we accept the high school, middle school, and cafeteria counts as presented.
The motion and a second. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, granting of orders.
I move that we approve the payments of invoices in the amount of $8,292,983.07 for August 2022 as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none. Anyone, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. The treasurer's report.
I move that we approve the treasurer's report for August 2022 as presented and file it for audit.
The motion and a second. Does anyone have any questions with regard to the report? Hearing none. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Action items 11, personnel.
I'd like to make a motion. Under action items, personnel, we approve 11.1 through 11.8.
I'd like to make a motion. Under action items personnel, we approve 11.1 through 11.8.
Okay, with a motion and a second to approve 11.1 through 11.8, does anyone have any questions? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Action item 11.9, supplemental staff.
I make a motion, 11.9, that we approve the supplemental staff athletic appointments.
With a motion and a second to approve 11.9, are there any questions? Okay, hearing none? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. 11.10, supplemental staff non-athletic appointments.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve 11.10 supplemental staff non-athletic appointments. And there's quite a few, which is great to have everybody involved.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve 11.10. Are there any questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 11.10 passes. 11.11, school safety and security coordinator.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 11.11, school safety and security coordinator.
With a motion and a second to approve 11.11, are there any questions?
Yeah, if we could just get a review on that, please.
Absolutely. So ACT 44 of 2018 requires that each district names a school and security coordinator. That, that position has been being filled by Dr. Anne Marie Lucas. It was previously held by Dr. Kate Pacito. This action item simply formally recognizes Dr. Lucas as serving in that role.
Okay, are there any other questions? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Action items 12, business.
I'd like to make a motion, action item business, to approve 12.1 and 12.2.
With a motion and a second to approve 12.1 and 12.2, are there any questions? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 13, action items education.
I'd like to make a motion, action items education, that we approve 13.1.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve 13.1. Are there any questions? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? 13.1 passes. 13.2, conference attendance, school safety conference.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve 13.2 through 13.6.
Thank you. With a motion and a second to approve 13.2 through 13.6, are there any questions?
I actually do have one. For the dual enrollment for the Pitt classes, are they, I remember having a quick conversation about this. I don't recall exactly when. It was recently, and I believe it was, the outcome was that half the time, like, quite a few times, we weren't even running those classes. Is that, am I remembering that correctly, or am I just getting old? Thanks.
So that, that predates my arrival, I think. What, one of the things that we did this year, and will be doing every year moving forward, is making a decision whether or not a class has enough enrollment to actually run. Course requests are the currency of the realm, so to speak. If kids want a, want a course, we want to be able to run that course. And if, if, if it's a course that is not attracting students, then no, we don't want to run that. I believe this, and I'm looking at Mr. Voorhees if, for, he can correct me if I'm wrong. This training allows us to offer this class as a dual enrollment class, allowing our students to get, so it's not about whether we run the class. It's rather whether or not we run the class and students can get dual enrollment credit. Am I correct in that?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a requirement for anybody on our staff who's teaching that course, correct, going to be off approved. The University of Pittsburgh, they have to attend that training.
Yeah, that I knew. I just, I, like I said, maybe I'm, maybe I dreamt it, but I, I thought there was a fairly recent conversation about how those classes usually didn't even fill, so they didn't run. Maybe I'm wrong.
I can tell you that I know, like, the AP German class last year was also dual enrollment with University of Pitt, and that did run. And I know at least one student that did get credits through Pitt for that, so.
If it would be helpful, I could prepare a report and share it with the board on our current enrollment of dual enrollment classes. Would that, would that be helpful?
It was really just the Pitt one, because there was, I had questions about that when it, when it was first introduced, because I was told by one of my good friends from college, who's a guidance counselor in Pittsburgh. I went to school out near Pittsburgh, so all my college friends live there. She said they actually used Pitt, the Pitt dual enrollment classes as a prerequisite to AP classes, because they didn't hold them in very high standard. And that's in Pittsburgh, so a lot more kids out there are going to Pitt than here. So that's just what, that was one person, but she is a longtime guidance counselor in the Pittsburgh area. So that's why I was asking. Because apparently in Pittsburgh, it just isn't, I don't know. It's not looked at in the same light as AP.
Understand. The, the benefit of having our staff run, there, there's two different ways that students can get dual enrollment. They can take the course by the, given to, the instruction provided by the post-secondary institution. So it could be Montgomery County Community College, it could be Pitt, or it could be our teachers teaching the content. When it's our teachers teaching the content, we have more ability to influence the, the content, the rigor, all of those pieces. It's, there are minimum requirements, and I'm again looking at Mr. Voorhees if, to correct me, should I stray? There are minimum requirements to meet, to meet the requirements of dual enrollment programs. But when, when we teach it, we have a little more flexibility to make sure that the class is in fact rigorous. And I, I would say generally, I think there's, there is, in a lot of the classes, I think the AP class generally does tend to be the, the more rigorous of the two. But one of the, one of the beliefs and one of the goals I have for our high school students is all of our college-bound, so any post-secondary-bound student, whether it's two-year or four-year college, we believe that it's very effective for them to take their first college course, whether it's dual enrollment or an AP course, here on campus, taught by one of our teachers which, who are more supportive and care, care more about our students than, than you're going to see in college, while students are still living at home and have the support of their families. We want our, our college-bound kids to graduate here knowing confidently that they can be successful with college-level content. So that's, that's where the dual enrollment and the AP both kind of find a fit.
I have nothing against either one act, really. I just remember that, and now it's starting to come back to me. The Pitt has fewer requirements of the teacher, if, if it's still the same. Meaning, the teacher, I believe, only had to have a master's, period, not a master's in the subject that they were teaching. So whereas in AP, they have to have a master's in that subject, if I, if I'm correct. So that's what made me question it from day one, because, I mean, you're not going to go to college, and, and most likely, you're not going to go to an accredited university and find a, a professor that's not an expert in their field, teaching you something. You know, that, that doesn't at least have a master's in, in that particular area, if not a doctorate and beyond. So, that was, that was what caught my eye at first, when this was first brought up. So, that's all. I didn't mean to go down a rabbit hole. I just had a question, that's all.
Were there any other questions with regard to any of the items 13.2 through 13.6? Okay, hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. We're at 13.7, vaping and vaping cessation.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 13.7 vaping and vaping concessions.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
Just, I think this is a wonderful idea. My question would be, how are we going to monitor the bathrooms for vaping?
Excellent question. The, the agenda item is to implement a, per our board policy, 222 tobacco and vaping products, to implement a fine of $50 for every, any student in violation of that. The, the district also can waive that fine with successful completion of a vaping cessation program that will be held on our campus and provided to students in need of that. So that, that is, that's, that's what we're, we're talking about here. To Mr. Lappic's point, vaping is, it's an issue in, in schools. Not, not just Pacheco. It's an issue in schools across the country, and I suspect across the world. We are looking to add an additional component to our disciplinary response to vaping infractions. There won't be any changes in how we monitor and how we, for lack of a better word, police our hallways and bathrooms to detect vaping infractions. But what we want to do is, we want to, A, take advantage of our ability to issue a citation, and B, leverage a, a vaping cessation program to give the, the student support in stopping that practice. There's plenty of research out there that vaping is not a safe alternative to tobacco use. And certainly vaping any THC-laced product is not something that we want happening here or anywhere on our campuses. So we're, we want to take this problem seriously. And I do believe that a citation like this will compel more students to participate in the vaping cessation programs. And I am hopeful and optimistic that those programs will be successful in decreasing the vaping on, across our district.
Thank you. Are there any other questions with regard to 13.7? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. 14.1, MCIU update.
All right, that would be me. So, this is the first time, I believe that this has been on the agenda. And it's, I'm hoping it can stay on the agenda. Because each, so each school in Montgomery County sends one board member to, to be on the board over at the MCIU. So they have a meeting monthly. I think there's two months throughout the school year that they do not meet. But what's really nice about their meetings is they, if you come about a half hour early, they actually serve a very light dinner. And because you have people coming from all over the county, you know, with only one board member per school, we don't know each other. So it's really nice, because you get a chance to eat. Usually the directors are there. And you just sit down and, you know, you meet somebody new. Just about every time, you talk about what's going on in your schools, what's going on in your lives, stuff like that. So that's really nice. Anyway, so at each meeting, they set it up so that the director of one department comes and speaks about their specific department. The MCIU is so much more than what most people think. They handle an amazing amount of things there, and they do it extremely well. We're very lucky to have the MCIU at our fingertips. It is probably the premier IU in the state. It's spoken of very highly across the state. They are called in when, often when a school gets taken over by the state. The, that I know of, MCIU is just getting out of one and is still currently involved in another, where they actually send administrators. They, they, they bring the school back up to where it needs to be in order to abide by state regulations and, and keep, you know, just get the students in a place where they, they are actually going to a school that's, that they're getting something out of. So anyway, at this, at the meeting last month, the program highlight was Patton. So Patton is actually, some people call it Pittan. They offer training and technical assistance to support special education throughout the state. They also offer, like, they'll do printing and do, you know, flyers and handouts and stuff that would help parents, teachers, administrators navigate through the world of special, special education. So there's, I believe they said there's only three throughout the state, and it just so happens that one of them is located within the Montgomery County IU. So, anyway, after that, we just go through everything. All the directors give us a report on their specific departments. What they had done just recently is had their opening day at North Penn High School. They did have over 50 new employees this year, start. They did a kickoff at the high school, at North Penn High School. And let's see, what was the next thing? They are currently purchasing a property on Morris Road in West Point, Pennsylvania. They're supposed to, it should have been settled on a couple of weeks ago. It was, okay. And they will be expanding. They'll be using that as yet another school to accommodate students in that part of the county. And let me just see if anything else was, I mean, everything else was just sort of updates. Anyway, if you ever get the chance, the, I've learned quite a bit about the MCIU. I mean, we all know about it. We've, you know, we've dealt with, with them in our superintendent searches and stuff, but there's so much more to it that it's just kind of mind-boggling that that all happens within, you know, under the leadership of, of Dr. Speaker, and they, they just do amazing work there. And I'm happy to say that my daughter is now an employee of the Montgomery County IU. She's working in their partial, partial hospitalization program, which is another. My daughter's advisor at Millersville, when she was telling her about the internship that she had gotten at the MCIU in the partial hospitalization program, said, "You have to take it, because as far as I know, that's the only program like that in the state." So you, you, you have to take that internship. And it just so happened that there was a position that opened up right after her internship was over, and she was able to get hired, and she absolutely loves it. I mean, loves it. She wasn't even supposed to stick around. She was planning on moving back to Lancaster and get a job there. And when this job was opened and it was offered to her, she absolutely couldn't turn it down. So I just have a lot of good things to say, and, anyway, if you, if you ever get the chance to just go on their website, just tool around and just see everything that they have to offer, it's pretty amazing.
Thank you so much. Moving on to 15.1, Joint Operating Committee.
Well, last night, we had a Zoom meeting. Only reason we had it at 5:30 is because some of the Springfield is because some of the Springford board members had other committee meetings, we're always trying to fit everything in. So it was an excellent meeting, good discussion back and forth. The Western Center directors have been at the middle school, Pots Grove, tonight they're at Springford, and they were at Upper Perk, so they're already trying to introduce the different programs that they offer. What is it, eighteen programs we have, Joe?
Yes.
Yeah, eighteen different programs at the Western Center, and I cannot say enough. So we are very excited to be a part of it. We are going to establish a facilities committee, because last time I told you, we have some upcoming facility issues that we have to get embarked on, so I will be reaching out. I always try to get, because I chair, I try to get one representative from each school district to be part of it. So I already kind of have an idea who I, who I would want, you know, to, actually one here already said he would help me. But, but I just think we need to be more in tune with a committee like that, to kind of know what's going on. So, but other than that, the kids are excited, they're having a great year, they're ready to go. So, I just wish them the best, and that's it, any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Sure.
When you're forming those committees, do you ask for volunteers, or do you pick them yourself?
Actually, I ask for volunteers.
Okay.
Because it's really hard sometimes, because just like us, we're on so many committees, and to go there, it's like one more thing they have to, you know, do. So, it's, it's pretty much whoever can fit, fit the shoes. So we're going to definitely, but I think it's definitely needed. And the administration does agree too, so it's pretty much whoever can help with that.
I just know in the past, there were committees that were made, that, that there were no volunteers asked. They were just chosen, so that's why I was asking.
Oh, you mean the personnel committee?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's worked out well.
Other members didn't even know existed.
Yeah, well, just so you know, that's one, one more thing real quick, is they're getting down, and Jace is on the personnel committee, and the union negotiations are coming along really well, so they're hoping to solve that real soon. So, thank you for your time, for doing that. That's it. Unless you guys had anything you wanted to add?
Any other questions with regard to the report of the JOC, the meeting update? Okay, we're already at new business, we'll start with Dr. Finery.
Nothing for me.
Ashley?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on conversation we had last meeting about the, the vehicles and the buses on the, on the website. I know there had been, there had been an email that was started about possibly donating those buses to Ukraine, but we were told that they had too many issues with them. But I, since then, a couple questions came up. I went back and I looked at the original request, or looked for the original request from the board for the buses that finally were sold on municipal. And the only thing I could find was me asking a question back in January of nineteen, how the process was going. And Dave had said that they, it wasn't done yet, but the buses would be on the site soon. And it's two and a half years later. And I can't, I still can, for the life of me, cannot figure out how it took two and a half years.
I cannot provide an answer to that question.
I mean, during that time, were we paying insurance, registration, all that stuff?
We don't pay registrations.
No, there's no registrations?
No, you pay it once, and because we're in the government, we don't pay it every year, like a normal person does.
Okay. Do we pay storage, or do we own the land?
It's on CMD's property, so we pay them storage.
So we pay them storage for, for the buses, like individual, or just, like a blanket fee?
A blanket fee, based on per bus charge. So it's, they take the number of buses times, I want to say it's forty-three dollars a day off the top of my head, but I'm not positive.
So we were paying for those buses to be stored, is that per month, or is that per year?
Per month.
So we were paying for those buses to be stored for two and a half years?
That would be correct.
Okay. There's just, I, sorry, there's just a lot to, sort of to wrap my head around here. I can't understand why the board gave, you know, they agreed that they wanted this to, these to be sold on the site, and it, two and a half years later, they finally got put on the site. I'm having a hard time understanding why. I know you weren't in, you know, you were the assistant director at the time, I understand that. I, I don't know, it just baffles my mind, I guess. And I also was trying to figure out too, why we haven't been doing this all along. Like, how many times have we just traded in a bus for five hundred dollars when we could have been putting it on the site?
No, we've never done it for five hundred dollars, the buses used to be traded in for three thousand dollars.
Oh, so it's just a recent thing, the five hundred, ah, okay, okay, that's why it wouldn't have raised any red flags. Because I did notice that the, the creator of municipal actually is from Pottstown. So I think we probably would have known about municipal like a long time ago. Would be my guess, you know. So, anyway, that was just, I just, I just wanted to get, you know, I had the question about storage, insurance, stuff like that. Sorry, it's just something that I, I just can't figure out, so, anyway, thank you.
Bill? Jim? Dr. Nippert? Patty?
I just wanted to say shout out to some of the, the band members and the athletes out there. I've been able to get around and see some of them, and it's just an excitement to see everybody coming back together again. It's got that, that feel in the air, so it's just really good to see, and I just wish them all the very best. Have fun.
Jay? Joe? Lily? Emily? It's so nice to see you both. So my only new business is, how's school going so far?
It's been pretty good, I've been enjoying this year, I mean, it's my senior year, so it's kind of sad. But I'm happy to be back with my friends, and I love all my teachers and my classes, so I'm, I'm just happy, and field hockey. We had a game today, we lost, but I'm just happy to be here.
Yeah, I think it's going good, I like how things back to more normal than it was last year. I'm a junior, so it's, you know, finish strong, I guess. But, you know, my classes are good, I'm with my friends in most of my classes, like, I don't know, I think it's going to be a good year, so I'm looking forward to the rest of the year.
Thank you for sharing. So we're moving on to our second public comment. This is where anything that anyone wishes to discuss is, is up for discussion, for the, I'm quite redundant tonight. So, in that vein, is there anyone in the room that has any public comment? Okay, how about online? Okay.
Good evening to all of you, William Einhorn, district employee. First of all, I would like to echo what our wonderful board, student board reps have said. You know, it's, it has felt like a normal start to the year, where nobody seems to be walking around on pins and needles and eggshells, you know, whether we can do this, or do this, or whether we're allowed to do this, or are we allowed to stand here, things like that. It's felt, it's felt amazing, and it's felt good, and, you know, it really does feel like, you know, we're, we're in a great time of recovery from the last couple of years. I want to take a second as well to applaud the fact that we are taking, on behalf of my colleagues, that we're taking a serious look at, and serious look at the consequences of the vaping issues that have been occurring over the last few years. I know that we brought these up last year, and I just want to kind of reiterate that, while it's great, we are doing things, trying to do things to address and trying to deter people from doing this in our schools, we want to make sure, at least on behalf of our colleagues, that the message is, is that we will not tolerate it, and that our district policies with regards to vaping are going to be, are going to be followed, and, you know, we just, we just hope that the problem improves this year. So that's all I had to say, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Einhorn, is there, are there any other comments? Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Dr. Finery? No, okay. If there's nothing else, motion to adjourn. Okay, thank you, good night, everyone.